All right, can I have a motion and a second to return to the public?
All motions.
Okay.
I'll second Osborne.
Thank you. Curriculum Instruction is from Bondear.
Good evening. Curriculum Instruction for A travel, we have one staff member attending the teachers Association for Health Physic education, Recreation and Dance 2021 virtual extension workshop. That's all for Part A travel. Part B of Curriculum Instruction, item number one is asking the board to approve the attached 2021-2022 staff holiday schedule, which is Curriculum Instruction Attachment two. Item number two is recommending that the Madawan Aberdeen Regional School District Board of Education enter into a memorandum of agreement with Rowan University and participate in their Teacher Preparation Academy. This Teacher Preparation Academy is a two to four year free collegiate program for high schools due to consider career in education, earn college credits and engage in experimental activities with pre-service candidates and future learners to develop relationships with Rowan faculty and staff to participate in transition from high school to college. This presentation on this Teacher Preparation Academy was presented to the Board of Education in December by Mr. Allen and a member from Rowan University, and this is at no cost of admission. Item number three is asking the board to approve the partnership agreement between the district and Tools of the Mind with the Madawan Aberdeen Regional School District preschool curriculum for the 2020-2021 school year. This is for four new preschool classrooms at the amount listed for a total of $15,000, and this is covered in the preschool expansion page. Item number four is asking the Board of Education to approve a contract with teaching strategy Goal, TS Goal, to provide professional development training, materials and print and digital resources for preschool teachers for the 2021 school year. This is also for the preschool expansion amount indicated as $14,690. The ratio will provide information about the TS Goal program. And that's all for curriculum instruction.
All right, I think you finished.
Yes, that's all for curriculum instruction.
All right, thank you, John. Special Services, Ms. Perez.
Good evening, everyone. Ten, ten, one, item under Special Services, we're asking for a board approval for college students to attend an admissions replacement for the major of the 2021 school year. The school is Parkville Park Academy, the class is listed, all of the effective things, and the rationale is with a transfer against the special services.
Thank you, Mrs. Perez. Personnel, Miss Believer.
Thank you, good evening. There are several action items the board would consider tonight. We'll start with the often item for action that we share electronically with the board this afternoon, which includes item one settlement agreement and item two of the recommendation. Continuing with active items on the agenda, action item A, the acquaintance request the board to approve two staffers that are listed with the respective effective dates. And the additional action item for this evening is the job description listed. Continuing with the agenda, action items under section A, reservation for retirements, three names that are listed, retirement reservation reasons along with their effective dates. Item B, leave the vast assistance for 21, three staffers listed with their types of needs and their effective dates. On our section C, according to there are placeholders, the several of the placeholders be included for the funding of the grant. Moving on to page three, item for the college student servers, if an intern for two, four months, names listed with their property, teacher and schools. You'll notice that there is one line, the second one now, the name for back home students with the capable of which people that grant two. Item number four, curriculum instruction for point one, there are a couple placeholders, we have co-partners, however, we have names listed for presenters on the bottom of page three, continuing on top of page six. Item number five, extracurricular activities that are placeholders, which will be included for the grant. Item number six, high school graduation chatroom for 2021 school year with names listed. Nothing for items seven and eight. Item number nine, staffing changes for point one, staffing reserve listed, the first name is for summer change, the remaining names on the bottom of page five, continue on top of page six, are interludes. No additional names for items 10 and 11, under section D other, it's a tip report from January 25th. Item B, he's a permanent tenant instructor for one staff member, and item C are extra hours of conversation with staff members listed. This concludes the Personnel Agenda.
Thank you, Miss Believer. Finance, Mr. Financy.
Good evening. Under the Finance Agenda, we have one action item for this evening, and that is to approve settlement agreement, which was discussed with the board previously. Item number two is the approval of our January payroll and February bills list, which will be filled in for the RAM. Item number three and item number four are the financial reports that will be presented hopefully for the RAM. Item number five is the acceptance of the 2019-20 annual audit report and the approval of the related corrective action plan, which has been submitted to the board for review. The audit was discussed with the Finance Committee in detail, with the district auditor. The finances are in very good shape. Reserves are strong. We were able to replenish some of our other reserves besides the general fund balance, which includes our capital reserve, maintenance reserve and emergency reserves. So financially, great shape. However, there were, the agenda says six recommendations, there are actually five. There were six that were discussed with the Finance Committee, but the final report only has five, so we will update the corrective action plan for the five recommendations that were in the report. The recommendations deal primarily with financial reporting. There were some issues with timeliness. There were also some issues with the reconciliations with the treasurer. We also had issues with looking at our outstanding purchase orders at the end of the year. Another issue that was raised deals with the accounting for our capital asset inventory. So corrective action plans are necessary. They've been developed and they will be updated for the RAM for the year to come. Item number six is the purchase of some desktop computers, which are included in our budget. Item seven are firing evacuation drills and item number eight are bus evacuation drills which are, that includes finance.
Thank you. Now, we reach public comments relating to agenda items, agenda items only. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on matters of interest to the school community. Individuals wishing to speak must state their name and address. Comments are limited to three minutes in duration, but an individual may speak a second time after all of this who wish to speak on a topic have been heard. All statements should be directed to the board president and no participants may address or question board members and management. All speakers are requested to express themselves in a civil manner with due respect for the dignity and privacy of others whose legal rights may be affected. Please note, while it is not the board's intention to spike the comments on matters of legitimate concern, the public should be aware that if their statements violate the rights of others under law defamation or invasion of privacy, they may face personal liability to the injured party. Their speakers are uncertain of the legal ramifications of their comments. The board urges them to seek guidance beforehand from their own legal advisor. Now, these are comments on agenda items, agenda items only.
I don't see any public comment here, I just see comments as to, or two comments as to our agenda items, may I make those at this point?
Sure.
First, I wanted to say, I see there's a lot of stuff on curriculum instruction regarding the area. It was amazing to watch that start, the video that was sent to us but also circulated Facebook, it was great. I can only imagine the benefit that we've been able to provide to the community, to those kids who could not afford daycare otherwise, who could not afford preschool and education otherwise at that age, and how that will benefit the school in the long run as well as those children. So again, I thank you, Ms. Perez, for being able to get us that way and work to get that movement through the Department of Labor. So thank you, you're tremendous. As to the Finance Agenda, I'm the chair of that Finance Committee, and I believe that I'm supposed to report on that next meeting soon. That's all.
Thank you, Mrs. Perez. Mrs. Financy, can you please follow through to action on agenda items?
Okay, first item is Curriculum Instruction, IMA. The motion and a second.
All motions, one second.
Any discussion? Saying none, I'll take a roll. Dr. Delaney is your vote on Curriculum Instruction.
Here, after the room.
Ms. Freeman?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Ms. Montone?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Ms. Sescoli?
Yes.
Ms. Grayburn?
Yes.
Now, did you say that the Special Services or the National was supposed to say that? Not, just want to make sure. Okay, next is Personnel. Items A and B and the walk-in as well, the motion and a second.
All motions, one second.
Is there any discussion? I'll take a roll. Dr. Delaney, here. Ms. Freeman?
Yes.
Ms. Martinez?
Yes.
Ms. Montone?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Ms. Sescoli?
Yes.
Ms. Grayburn?
Yes.
Under Finance, item number one for action, a motion and a second is needed.
All motion, one second.
Any discussion? Call call, Dr. Delaney, here. Ms. Freeman?
Yes.
Ms. Martinez?
Yes.
Ms. Montone?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Ms. Sescoli?
Yes.
Ms. Grayburn?
Yes.
All motions carried.
Thank you. Any unfinished business? Any new business?
Ms. Grayburn, yes, I have, I have a new business to make.
Sure.
It has, we had stated the committee that I chair, which includes facilities, we had our meeting, there was a request for a director of facilities. He asked if we could get, if he could have consensus or get consensus from the board. The issue is if he can have consensus to not opening registration to any new outside groups for at least one month, which would take us to about mid-March. The reason for this would be to allow our PTSOs, our educational foundations, our sports or clubs, to be able to have time for them to be able to book those facilities such as the gym and the cafeterias in those areas. So he has asked if he can get consensus to make that delay, so to give our kids an opportunity to get in first. Anybody have objection to that?
Nope.
I was going to say, Allison, if you want to stand that in a form of motion and a second, then we can just go ahead and vote on.
Can I get a motion to allow our director of facilities to not open registration for any new outside groups for at least a month, which would take us to about mid-March?
All motion.
I'll second.
Call and favor?
Aye.
We're losing everybody again.
I'm here.
Got it, all right.
Is everybody who is appearing via Zoom in favor of that delay?
I am, all right, I'm raising my hand, I am. Kissy raised our hand. Jack's good?
So is Jeff.
Okay, so we're good.
That's good, okay, we're good.
That's all I have for new business, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Ms. Freeman. All right, we're back to public comments relating to additional matters. Again, our reminding of the public that their comments are limited to three minutes. Please state your name and your address, and just basically remember that addressing the board in a civil manner with due respect for the dignity and dignity and privacy of others.
I'm Diana Pell, and my address is 17 Islestone Lane, and I'm actually here to talk about what I'm very happy about. So one of the things is very happy to hear that the board is going to prioritize students and school groups and facilities, that's wonderful. Also, very happy to hear, I mean, this one is from the administration, but that there is going to be a robust summer programming for students to help with the slide in the side next because of this year. Also, was happy that this one is just sort of looking around at the COVID dashboard, it seems like perhaps there was a change of policy, but whatever the case, there are a lot less students and staff than swept into contacts, be it a ratio of contacts to cases, I think November 23rd, it was 7.75 for every case, and this past week it was just 2.3. So that's from a parent's standpoint, that's welcome news. Also, happy today that it appeared that just again, from parent perspective, that staff was directed to have school because it was school today. I don't know if that was officially told to all teachers, but at least I heard something along those lines. So then, I just have questions, I don't know if this is really the form for it, but I'll try. So the, we're happy to hear about the building plans to make to five day, and I was curious if there's any indicators that need to be met or they're going to be set in to be met so that those five day plans will be put into effect.
So to answer that, right now, as I stated before and in my letter on Friday, we're in the process of reviewing the updated five day plans that will be incorporated into our return back plan. We also have more CDC guides coming out on Wednesday, so I've been told, and you are right, those numbers are trying to mount, however, the county is still in orange, so we're going to be looking at all of those factors that this week goes on. But as I said before, and as some board members stated tonight, we've already started to increase our extracurricular activities. We have our expanded pre-K going in a five day clip right now, so we're looking at that as a barometer over the next, you know, five to 10 days as we start to incorporate those five day plans into our, into our larger plan.
Very cool. Also, a question about, so there's been, also there was a question about, just for the benefit of the parents, especially those who are cohort A parents, which does not mean, if they could explain why they're looking at a two hour delay for this morning?
Right, in a cohort COVID situation hybrid, we can't do half days, it doesn't work. So the buses would be going out and literally would be turning over to bring kids home, and then we have lunch issues as well, so a hybrid schedule does not lend itself to a two hour delay. So if you look across the state, we're all in the same mode in that, and the decision was made last night, and I will say this, we had our crews up here yesterday, and kudos to them again for the fantastic job that they do. We had everything clear, however, when we got the forecast that was going down to 19, we knew everything was going to freeze over, and I was not about to put anybody's in orange light when it's dark in the morning getting to school. So unfortunately, as it stands right now, a two hour delay is not, is just not feasible because it would, it pushes the day, it's over, the day's over by the time it starts.
Right, that would happen to the one that you did. Okay, and then had a comment that, which we talked about a little bit, but that if virtual, if virtual is going to be something offered to students in the upcoming year, that a lot of parents would like to see that be a separate program so that our teachers are not stuck with what they're doing right now where they're trying to teach thinkers and virtual at the same time.
And we're looking at that also in plan, and I'm not about to start looking into a personal ball for September, you know, but we're pushing ahead and looking all at me, but you know, we're, I think September is a different ballgame than February 8th today, yep.
And then along those lines, but just, you know, three minutes are up, over. Oh, it is, I'm so sorry. Okay, all right, well, thank you anyway, kind of enjoyed you guys, so we would love to have a kid who was just passing. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is three online? Abby?
Hello?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, hi, my name is Abby Burke, I'm in the three sign drive in Madawan, and I had a question. My question is, while you put a lot of effort into the online learning and it's appreciated, what's the board's plan for the students that are not successful in an online learning situation to make sure that they're not failing? Like it's happening in my house right now, I have three kids in district, one of, two of them are doing very well, I'm very lucky to have Mrs. Roy standing in Cliffwood, two of my boys are at middle school, and my oldest has an IUP, and we are struggling, he was a Barrett scholar, exactly second, Martin Berry last year, and now he just failed two classes. So I'm just curious as to what their, what your plans are for the students that just are not successful in this online learning environment to make sure that they're not failing.
Thank you for your question. Mr. Bondear and Ms. Perez?
I would just ask that you speak generally, only because, Ms. Burke, we can't discuss your individual child's needs, so before Mr. Bondear and Ms. Perez.
I could rephrase, I could rephrase. What is the district planning on doing for any child who is not successful in online learning environment?
Understood, now, but I was just going to add that if you have individual needs, I would ask that you reach out to your building principal so we can address those immediately.
Oh, I have, believe me, if anyone would, I definitely had a nice long conversation with this guidance counselor today.
Thank you.
And then, we have our own plan, but not every parent is able to advocate the way I am able to, so what can we do for those to be able?
All right, so Dr. Abdalakhan, do you want to just give a, an overview, a general overview of how your needs mentioned is going to happen to these children?
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Perez to talk about special education, and then Mr. Bondear for the graduate.
So just, speaking, just speaking in general terms, these, any student that has been unsuccessful with online learning, they've been invited back to come in five days, so I can't speak to your specific situation, Ms. Burke, but I would advise if it's not working and you have gone through the chain of command and have mastered the guidance counter, your next step is bill the principal and also myself. And that's for any parent, so if they're listening, they would follow the chain of command so that we can address the actual challenges that any child is facing. And we're doing that individually, so it's not, I can't give a specific response because every student, whether they have an ITP or not, is, their plan's going to look different, and so our strategies and needs mentioned are put in place for them to be successful. So if you don't mind, if you could reach out to myself and Mr. Wells tomorrow for your particular situation.
Mr. Bondear?
Yes, so for a general education, it's the same way for a parent, if they're struggling or their child is struggling with remote learning, they should reach out to their building principal, and they're making combinations for those children to attend five days a week. So the protocol is a parent should reach out to the building principal if their child is struggling with online learning, and we have action plans that we're putting in place and inviting those students to come in five days a week.
Can I just ask you a question, following what you said, Miller? My question is this, like for, at least for the middle school, while the kids are able to go in five days a week, it's still a completely, for the most part, an online learning environment. So like, that's just something to maybe think about because they're not necessarily, they're in a classroom, but the teacher's not in the classroom in front of them, they're still having to do things online. So that's really like my question, like, you know, what do we do? Because this isn't a one size fits all, you know, fix. Being in the, in the building doesn't necessarily say like, oh, great, they're having individual attention, because lots of times the teachers that are having the class and the kids are still literally sitting at the computer on an online environment, just in the building.
Okay, all right, thank you. Mr. Bondear, Ms. Perez, you want to add anything to that that you might not have already stated?
So we can't, we can't discuss individual staffing issues, and I'm not sure if they're specific teachers, but we do have students that are in the building. Some of them are doing online work while they're in the building, but that's not necessarily for every period, but as we work through the students, the staff are available, we are making sure that the students have both online interactions as well as face to face with their teachers. But individual staffing sometimes requires that the student logged in to online and the teacher delivering the instruction virtually, but that's not in every case, so once again, we urge you to reach out to Mr. Wells and we can certainly address that.
Thank you very much. Next, next parent.
Stephanie. Hello, my name is Stephanie Bonner, I'm at 23 Indigo Lane. I spoke at the board meeting two weeks ago, and I had a tone question but still have not been answered. Dr. Micah, you reached out, you were able to speak to us, we really don't have any answers, and I see that you put the letter out that you're starting five days, when is that going to happen? When is the plan going to be shared with the community? And who are you waiting to approve that plan?
So I didn't catch the last piece of that?
Who is approving that plan? Because again, the surrounding towns are all, and they're all increasing from either four days to five days. So now we're in the third market period, almost coming up to a year since our kids haven't had, you know, regular schooling, so I'm still concerned as to what is actually happening. So since the two weeks that I attended the board meeting, what has been going on that? Where's the plan?
So in the, in the past two weeks, like I said, we've, we've opened up our expanded pre-K to five days a week. We have.
Well, that was because we got grant money, correct? We had a UTE.
Yes, but it's also five days a week, so it's a good barometer to see, to see how things are going on a five day week. We've started to expand our extracurricular activities. We have, as I said, all of the five, five year, excuse me, all of the five day week plans have been submitted, they will be, they're going over by central office now, they will get approved by the county. As I stated, we're still in the orange zone, but we are continuing to open up more and more, as I said, the extracurricular activities are expanding, and we're keep moving in that direction. And as I stated before, we are still in the orange zone, and we're going to keep moving forward towards getting back to five days a week as soon as we can.
Okay, thank you. The orange zone would mean all of Monmouth County, correct? It's not just specific to Madawan Aberdeen, it's an orange zone, right?
No, it is all of Monmouth County, correct?
Okay, so there are plenty of schools in Monmouth County that are open, more than just two half days. I mean, you say extracurricular activities.
Excuse me, I'm not going to get into this comparative thing again, between us and Holmdel or Hazlitt or Middletown or anyone else. I mean.
But like, it's very interesting for us people.
It has nothing to do with anybody else, everybody has an individual plan, and I can tell you right now, there is no, when they say they're open five days a week, we're open five days a week. Okay, so I mean, you know, we're not just, they're doing comparison, I'm sorry, it's not going to happen, Dr. Michael.
Okay, well, this is my time to speak, so thank you, but I'm asking a question.
Your time is up right now, you answered your question, your time is.
He didn't answer any of my questions. So can I continue?
No, next parent, please.
Tina?
Hello?
Yes.
Yes, good afternoon.
Hi, this is Tina Jimenez. I live at 43 Lakeside Drive in Madawan. I've spoken to the group before in regards to the mental health issues for children and not being able to attend school. And Ms. Perez was kind enough to reach out to me and provide me some assistance. My question really to the group is, in regards to not just virtual learning, but the teachers don't seem to have a very cohesive, constructive plan across the board. And I'll give you a pure example. My son Matthew does not get to go to five days virtual, five days of in-school, in-person learning. On every Wednesday, since the beginning of virtual learning and this world of COVID, he has been done school at 12 o'clock and been done for the rest of the day. In theory, if he was in school and in-person, he would be in school from the morning till the afternoon. And I don't understand why certain teachers follow a certain program and guideline and certain teachers don't. While I understand that each teacher has their own way of teaching and educating children, there seems to be no cohesive plan in regards to teachers and providing an overarching, full day of learning, activities, homework, to make sure children are educated. And it seems to be, to me, that they, there are certain teachers that are out there, overextending themselves, doing a phenomenal job, doing a phenomenal job with virtual learning, and there are some teachers failing. I'll give you a great example. There are some teachers that understand that there is a daily summary that can be provided to each parent on a day, daily basis in the evening on what homework is submitted and not submitted. And it has been my job to educate these teachers. And there seems to be no communication across the teachers and through the district, whatever school you're in, in regards to making sure each teacher is working with all of the children from morning to evening. So essentially, my question to the group is, what has the district done to ensure that teachers are actually doing their job? What is the communication between the teachers and the district and the Board of Ed that is supposed to be looking out for our children and ensuring that they do not fall between the cracks to ensure that they are at their education level and continuing to grow?
So each, the protocol is each teacher, depending on what career level, everything flows through the building principal at, at the school level. We have a class review, classroom walkthroughs, as well as observations which are continuing the process. So that is the process that we have in place for monitoring instruction. Principals have monthly faculty and department meetings. Are done through the curriculum office, well, faculty meetings at the school level. And each school has a unique schedule depending on the grade level of the students. Some of the schools, particularly the lower elementary, they have their special areas, special electives in the afternoon. That also occurs in certain populations at the secondary level. So I can certainly speak with you individually to determine, you know, and get more specific information on your child's teachers. But those are the protocols in place across the district. We have weekly administrative team meetings where all of the principals meet together with a director and a superintendent. And we review exactly what's happening in the schools and we are constantly refining and reviewing the schedule. So if you have a specific concern, certainly you can go to address that. That's part of our weekly administrative team meetings. And if a specific school issue, you can only address that with the principal and after you share with the faculty meeting if there is any area.
I guess to kind of just add on to that and maybe refine that question a little bit more, what are the guidelines for teachers for ensuring that they're working from the morning till the, to the late afternoon? When they are, in theory, if they were in school, they would be. They would be working from, say, whatever your schedule is, call it eight o'clock in the morning until two o'clock in the afternoon. It doesn't seem to be, to me, there is a cohesive plan across all schools in Aberdeen and Madawan in regards to each child. And I would say that I am not the only parent who talks about this. This is something that's consistently spoken about through social media, about why is my child done at 11 o'clock? Why is my child done at 12 o'clock? Why is this teacher not done this? What is going on in the school? And my question to you guys is, what is the, what is our plan at the district? And how are we holding these teachers accountable for doing their job? They are dedicated by our district and our time zones to educate our children, which means these kids should be in school, in theory, from regular school out, not half-days, not every one day and half-day that my son has, which is absolutely ludicrous, ludicrous. You don't go to work every day and work four hours a day. You know what? I'm checking out at 12, I'm done. That's not how life is. What are we teaching our children?
All right, Mrs. Jimenez, Mr. Bombedear had said that you can get in touch with him and you can talk to him about specifics. So now we need to move on to the next parent. Thank you.
Bobby? Bobby up?
I don't think that my answer, my question was answered at all.
Bobby is next.
Next parent, please.
All right, Bobby? Bobby's not answering, we'll put her back. Jared?
Can we have somebody else?
Yes. Jared?
Hi, my name is Abigail Valeris. I live at 125 Holmdel Lane in Madawan. My mother, Brock, is outside and is in that area of the classroom at the middle school. Her interest is in believing and she wants to be doing the job. I'm just here to kind of piggyback off of what Ms. Bonner had said. I think we should just look at the running from our neighboring district that are open five days a week. If they're able to leave, they're open five days a week. I don't see what we cannot. Also, I just wanted to say also maybe back to off of what Ms. Burke had said, that when we are in school, it would be much more beneficial for students if they were not online while in the classroom. I think a lot of students are having a tough time doing the virtual learning. So I would love to see us looking for and doing in-person learning as opposed to doing virtual learning even while in school.
Thank you very much. Next.
Bobby? Are you up? Are you available? All right, Nadine? Nadine?
Is there anyone there?
Nope.
Nadine? Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, good afternoon.
Hi, my name is Nadine. I live at 82 Cambridge Drive. My son Ryan is at Cambridge Park. I would like to donate my time to the mom, three moms before me, who ran out of time because that is still my same question and it was the question asked by the last mom as well. And it wasn't answered. So I would just want to give my time to her. I'll stop talking. Thank you.
Dan?
If, if any, if anyone on the board, Dr. Micah, Mr. Bombedear, if you feel that you needed to add to the answer that you gave to Mrs. Jimenez, then please do.
I think it states that every teacher has a schedule. They are working and following their schedule. And if any parent has a specific concern, that they should bring that to their building principal. And of course, we will look into any concerns that are brought to our attention. However, each teacher has a full schedule. That schedule has a lunchtime and prep time for that teacher. Some of those are in the morning, some of those in the afternoon. Some of the schedules have four subjects in the morning with the home teacher with special electives in the afternoon. So the schedule varies by school and by level. But I can assure you that every teacher that is in the district has a regular, full schedule. And if there's a specific concern, parents are encouraged to please contact the building principal.
All right, let me play devil's advocate here for a second. Who is supervising that this actual instruction is going on and they're getting a full complement of their periods and their needs?
The building principal and your assistant principal, not them.
Okay, thank you. So again, as you stated, that the chain of command would then go to the building, start with the building principal and speak to the building principal about the concerns.
That's correct.
Thank you. Next, next parent.
Cindy?
Hi, thank you. My name is Cindy Centora. I'm at 418 Lloyd Road. I have a quick question and it kind of piggybacks off of what you guys were just talking about. My question is, who tracks canceled Google meetings? So like, a teacher is supposed to do a meeting and then all of a sudden the kids get notifications that that meeting is canceled. And I know you just said the principal and the vice principals are tracking that the meetings are happening. But how many principals and vice principals are there to track? I would say probably hundreds, right? Hundreds of Google meets going on all at once? So, I mean, like, are you guys, like, tracking? Like, are you have a computer program that says, okay, this Google meet for Ms. Smith lasted 45 minutes? Okay, this Google meet for Mr. Smith lasted only five minutes? Or this meeting for Mr. Smith didn't even happen? Because I'm gonna tell you, I belong on social media and the amount of complaining on the school pages for parents about, oh my goodness, another Google meet has been canceled. Or, oh my goodness, this is like a pre-calc class. How could they cancel Google meet again? Is quite frequent and I know, and I'm gonna tell you straight out, the same way, you know, sometimes it's hard to get people to come to protest is people worry about retaliation. And our children are in these classes and they are with these teachers. So sometimes it's hard to get a parent to complain or to let you know that there's a problem. I know that I said to my daughter, any Google meet that's canceled, I wanna know about. So like, the first couple of times she told me about canceled meetings and then she said, what are you doing with this? I said, oh, I'm keeping track of how many meetings are canceled. She said, hell, no, I'm not telling you any Google, any meetings that are canceled. I have to be in these classes with these teachers. Absolutely not. I am not telling you anymore. And then she stopped telling me. So you have to understand where we're coming from as parents, but we need more of an answer than telling us, oh, the principal is tracking it because the principal's one person and there are so many of these meetings going on. And we wanna know, is there another way that these meetings are being canceled? Being tracked? Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Mike? Or, Mr. Bombedear, you wanna answer that?
Yes, so I would say, once again, every principal has a spreadsheet with all of the Google meets when they're taking place in a, in a daily basis. Is every single Google meet monitored? No. However, our principals are doing drop-ins to Google meets. And part of our regular job is to support teachers through walkthroughs, through the process of meeting with teachers and faculty meetings. And if any parent has a concern about why a Google meet, we do have cases where a teacher is out sick on a particular day. And in that case, there could be a situation where a Google meet plus teacher is out sick. That Google meet may need to be canceled on that particular day. So there are instances on a case-by-case basis that the Google meet may need to be canceled. That is certainly not the norm nor it should be. And if there is a concern with Google meets being canceled on a consistent basis, once again, definitely needs to be brought to the principal's attention. So we can look into that and figure out what is happening. But the teachers, I can tell you, are all working extremely hard. Our administrators are working extremely hard to monitor the instruction. Our teachers are working extremely hard to deliver quality instruction. We're all doing our best to monitor and make sure that the instructional plan is as meaningful to the students as possible. And if any parent has a specific concern, it needs to be brought up to even the teacher or the administrator so we can look into it as it occurs.
Can I make a suggestion on this? I believe that some of the comments are basically saying to the effect that it gets kind of stalled at the building level. So that if a parent or a guardian contacts the building principal or vice principal with specific questions, let's say they contact the teacher, they should also basically CC the building principal and vice principal that they had in this communication. If they're contacting the building principals or the vice principals, I believe, Mr. Bombedear and Ms. Perez, you should also be CC'd. This way, you know, you're made aware of the situation prior to us having a board meeting and people are getting frustrated that it's not moving beyond the building level itself.
Yes, certainly, any, any concern that is brought to our attention, we, we check in on every concern. So absolutely, that's the protocol to have in place. And the parent wants to copy Ms. Perez or myself or Dr. Micah on correspondence. Ms. Perez would do so. You know, and just to reiterate that building principal is always that first line. And they can certainly copy any of us on correspondence. So they can.
All right, thank you very much.
Yes. One more person. Ms. Wernicki?
Next.
Hello?
Yes.
Yes, good afternoon, we can hear you.
Siedel Wernicki, I'm at Lean. I just wanted to also say that, that high school level, it's difficult to, you know, convey what's going on without the students saying, you know, I'm gonna get in trouble. Teacher's not gonna like me, things like that. So that's why there's concern. I've actually asked, I have been, you know, in contact sporadically throughout the year about situations that have arisen, specific scenarios. And I've asked to not have the student's name revealed. And I don't know if that's being honored or not, but, you know, I wanted to know directly from Dr. Micah, is that something that can be honored? So that you feel a little bit more, you know?
I will say this, if, 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 if someone is fearing retaliation and they are meeting with obstacles going up the chain of command, you should call central office. Myself, Mr. Bombedear, or Ms. Perez.
No, there's actually no obstacles with the chain of command. I mean, the building principal of high school, Sarah, has been great. But there's a fear that, that the student would be identified and then it would kind of ruin the relationship between student and teacher. And there may be, you know, there may be no other issues for that student, but when you're identifying a situation where, you know, maybe the teacher is canceling meetings or, you know, like on a day like today where everybody was removed, you know, kind of giving an assignment and then saying, all right, you guys are free until the next period. You know, you're worried about getting, you know.
No, not what I would say to you is if, if anyone out there has a fear of retaliation, I would ask them that they call me directly.
Thank you.
I think, again, I think that this is what's coming out of this evening with the parents and their concerns and the concerns of their children. I think this is a topic that really needs to be addressed when you have a cabinet meeting with your building administrative staff to let them know, you know, how the parents are feeling, what the fears are, and so that we can sort of ramp up the supervision a little bit better. Next.
Ms. Bobby? Is she gonna unmute? She's not unmuted. That was the last one of all the first requests. And Abby wants to speak again? That's all right? Abby?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, okay. I had a question and just on what the, one of the parents was saying about the meets being canceled. Instead of the parents having.
Excuse me, excuse me, just, I'm sorry to interrupt. Please, do we have your name and address?
Oh, sorry. Abby Burke, Three Side Drive, Madawan. I already talked, all right?
Okay, all right, Ms. Burke, it's just that, you know, if everyone else has spoken, you can now, you know, take that turn to, to ask another question. If there are other people in line, they all have to go before you have a second chance.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see anything other than.
Yeah, all the, all the first requests went down.
I didn't touch the phone.
Okay.
So.
Yes.
Is Ms. Burke speaking?
Yes. Abby, you can speak.
Is that against?
Yes.
And then I'll leave to someone else.
No, I'm taking.
I know. So you know what? Go ahead.
No, I.
I just had maybe a suggestion that would help out with this problem of knowing that meets are not in place. So when, at the end of the day, like. So when, at the end of the day, like, obviously, I said that I get emails from my students, my students' teachers, telling me what they're missing, right? Is there a possibility that, at the end of the day, we can have a program where the principals and the Board of Education is informed every time the meet is not going for, at least in the middle school, the whole forty minutes or fifty minutes, that it's supposed to be that the teacher is not, maybe not going, or if it's got canceled early? Is there a possibility that there's a program that can just send an automatic email to the Board of Ed, to your inform, as well as to the principals of the school?
I will certainly look into that first thing, yes.
Thank you.
Stephanie?
So now, is that it?
No, Stephanie?
There is, I don't know if you can hear Patty, Ms. Dreher, but there's another repeat who would like to speak. Stephanie, I didn't hear the last name.
Stephanie?
It's honor, at twenty-three Indigo Lane. My time got shortened before. So as another parent piggybacked off what I said, are we looking to our neighbors, Holmdel, for advice or planning in helping get our doors open? Their elementary school is open five full days. So are we leaning on their Board of Ed, who has made that happen, to help us speed things along?
I mean, with the fifty-six superintendents in the county on a weekly basis, not to belabor the point, when we're talking about five days, it's... There are schools that haven't been opened in this county. There are schools that are on reduced, more reduced schedules. This is not a...
Okay, I can look up that information myself. I don't mean that. What I'm specifically asking, because Holmdel is so close, and they are neighbors, and they are putting an elementary school, K through six, in-person, five full days, or...
So you were asking for comparison, Aldridge, which is right next to us, hasn't been opened up this year yet, so...
Okay, that's how I'm asking. I'm asking about the school that is right next to us. Obviously, the Board of Ed is in charge of that, so I'm specifically saying, this is a Board of Ed meeting, that the Board of Ed of Holmdel fought back. They got their plans approved. That's what I'm asking. Like someone else suggested, is there something that we can move to accelerate this? We're in the third marking period already. Like, when are we gonna see wheels happening? That's what I'm asking. And because I've seen that happen to a school district close by, I guess I'm aware of all the other ones that aren't open. That's not what I'm asking. They were able to do it, and it seems to be streamlined. Is there, are you leaning on other school districts that do have this happening, and that aren't successful? That's the question. Because we still haven't seen what the plan is, and two weeks ago, you guys had been trying to be much more transparent and send us plans, and I think I rewatched the Board of Ed meeting from last week, and the word "plan" must have been instead "plan" times.
So...
I'm just trying to find out more...
Dr. Micah, all right, let me add, I'll answer the question again, put an answer to your question again. I am not looking to Holmdel, I'm not looking to Haslip, Aldridge, or anyone else in Monmouth County as to what their plan happens to be, and how they're moving forward, and what they're doing, what they consider to be in the best interest of their communities. We are trying to formulate plans. We want to bring the children back as soon as possible. We want to get up and move towards something that might be considered normal, even though I don't know what that is anymore. But no, I'm not gonna go and look at Holmdel. I'm not going to inquire, as Dr. Micah said, we meet with all the other superintendents on a weekly basis. If there was something, something, that he could take and apply to our school district that would ensure the safety and well-being not only of the children, but of the teaching staff and administrative staff and all of the related services, we certainly would do it in a heartbeat. But the fact that we don't do it in a heartbeat, that's because there is something that they are doing at Holmdel that is not applicable to us. And it's not, and it's not a means or a platform to start arguing about. It's just the fact that every district, five hundred and eighty-six districts in the state of New Jersey were told to do their own thing, make up their own plan. So we're moving as quickly as we can and ensuring the safety and well-being of our community. So, you're not gonna get them in a comparative thing. You're not gonna get that finger that people keep reaching out to. You know, "Why are we doing the same thing as this one, that one"? It's not gonna happen. Not gonna get into that argument.
Lady Dean wants to speak again?
Anybody else?
Yeah. Lady Dean would like to speak again.
Go ahead.
Hi, hi, Lady Dean, delivered eight years from Cambridge Drive. Miss O'Brien goes to Cambridge Park. You say that, you know, you have our children's best interests at heart, yet you will not look at other districts and what they're doing. And I understand, I totally get your point about, you know, there's something, you know, there's some kind of component that's allowing them, that is, that we don't have, that is keeping us from being able to do the same thing? How could none of you figure out what that one thing is, so that way, we can adapt and customize it to our districts and get our kids in? Because let me tell you, virtual learning is not working for our children. It's not working. That's it. They need to be back in school, okay? If we can go food shopping, if we can have twenty-two thousand people watch a Super Bowl, our kids could be in a [inaudible].
Travis Zul?
Yep, yes.
Yeah, call me later on about that.
Yep.
Is that it?
Ja- Jared.
Jared is next.
Hey, what's going on? My name's Jared Zunite. I'm from twelve English Lane in Adal. That's where I second grade at, my work's spoken earlier. So I just wanna piggyback off of Dr. Majak. I believe in mid-December, or stuff, we decided that we're gonna go back, or you put out in the mail that said we were gonna go back five days. Is that correct? Around that time period?
It was in January.
Okay, January. Will it be in orange in January when you put that out? That we're gonna go back five days?
Yes.
Okay, so, obviously, there was something in your plan where you believed that we could go back safe for five days while we're in orange, just like a lot of school districts have in Monmouth County and in our region, which isn't just Monmouth County. So, I just wanna know what, if you could explain, what changed so short that we pivoted from going back five days? What in the numbers was that you saw back in Holmdel that we never had? But now we've been trending in the right direction. Our own governor right now has said that we're trending in the right direction. Actually, he was on the plane, yeah, the press conference, that he said he's gonna be opening up the state even more. So since these numbers right now are so much better in February, and they weren't, and we put this out in, email out in January, and the numbers are better than they were in December, and obviously, we're trending in a good direction. Are we expediting going back to five days? And also, I'm trying to wrap the question up. I also just wanna make a comment. Somebody said, talking to the other, to Holmdel and these other schools, some of the ways that they opened up are not applicable to us, and would not be applicable to us. Well, my question to you is, how do you know if they're applicable to us or not? You're not willing to talk to them. You're not willing to see what their plan is. I think it's a little irresponsible, just saying that you're gonna shut out in these other towns, and not actually talk to them and see what has worked. People that have actually done it and put it in place, because maybe we can learn from the United States, maybe we can move forward. I think that there is a pathway to open up five days. You just have to be willing to do it. You guys, you are our constituents, as parents, as taxpayers. You guys have to listen to us. You have to listen to all these parents that speak to you, and what they want, and what they believe is best for their children. Okay, you're our representation. You're nobody else's representation, other than the taxpayers, the students, and the parents. So please, I just, you know, I ask you guys, if you will go and open up in January, the numbers are just getting back, I would beg you to expedite the process and open up at least five, five half-days. Thank you for your time.
Last one.
Let's answer some of his questions.
So, as of today, we have, on top of the hundred and twenty Plexiglas that we're already used, we installed four hundred and fifty more setups. We have two hundred and forty more setups getting ready to go out this week, and we are waiting on four hundred that more that are inbound. And my mistake in the letter was, I was thought that more of the Plexiglas had been delivered, and I own that, and that's on me.
And just also, to address what the gentleman has said and others, is that we are working on plans to start bringing back as many children as we can on a five-day basis. Right now, we don't have a date that we can give you, possibly within the next couple of weeks. We might have something. But right now, we are constantly working on plans, constantly. And as for the comment about, you know, my statement about the other districts, their plans are all on their website. All you have to do is go to the website and look at the plans. But to scratch beneath the plans, you find out that it's not all what they claim it is. And I know that for a fact. It's not an assumption. We have anybody else?
One more, Miss Tina, to speak again?
One more, Tina.
Hi, and it's Tina Adams from forty-three Way Side Road. The only other question I have is in regards to these two snowy Mondays that we've had. One, today was a full day, which means Cohort A, once again, has not been able to go back into school and is missing an in-person day. Is there some plan to adjust that schedule, so that these kids can have, recoup those two days?
Absolutely, yes.
When is that going to be put in place? Like, so, if it was a three, if we need that B to A?
The update in calendar will be in our weekly correspondence.
Okay, so we'll be getting those two days back for in-person? Because you're talking weeks until that point of possibly an opening. Okay, that was my only outstanding question that I have for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Miss Lady Dean is not allowed to?
No, that is it.
Okay.
Kevin, I have something to say. I have four, you know, children in the district. I have children in different schools. My husband is an educator, and his district has not even opened up for his students at all this year. What's very disappointing is that, a lot of times, parents don't understand that, you know, your children are out here, and they do come in contact with someone who has COVID. My husband and I have had COVID. We have recovered from it. However, we chose to keep our children quarantined for an extended period of time, which is twenty-four days. Now, I know, previously in the past, we'd have parents complain about keeping their children inside. My sons, both my sons who work, I have a son who is a father and responsible for two children, both quarantined from their jobs for the period of time they needed to quarantine for, and they were all tested negative. In order for us to go forward with being able to keep our buildings open, even if our children are coming in close contact with someone and they are negative, we still have responsibility, as a parent, to keep our children home, so they don't spread it to other people. And this is the reason why, when we have children that are coming into the building and the parents are sick, they're coming in contact with teachers, and we have to have these teachers out of the school, or like the bus drivers or any other administrators. What is also disheartening is the fact that we are open five days a week, and people keep saying, "Why can't we open five days a week"? We are open five days a week. It may not be accessible to all general education students, and it may be open to special needs and children who have IEDs, but it is open to some general education students who are struggling. And like those friends we said, if your child is struggling, and we can bring them back into the building, then we'll do that. I have children whose teachers didn't show up for, you know, Google meets or virtual things. I have a son who's not doing well. I have children who are excelling. Every child learns differently. Every child is different. Like I said, my husband's an educator, and we still have children who fail certain things. It doesn't mean that you failed as a parent. Every child learns differently. And I feel like we are doing our best to look after every child in the district. Maybe a parent who has four children in the district, I have one child who's graduated, I have five children. I have two grandchildren that are here learning virtually. So it's not easy for anybody. And yes, computers do shut down. Sometimes teachers have glitches as well, and they do wanna be in the building. But I think to, you know, find it a way, whether it's on social media or whether it's here, to not understand that we are trying our best, that we are doing it. And what Dr. Micah and President Kev said is that, we have looked at other districts. We are meeting with other districts. We know their plans, and their plans don't work for us. It didn't mean that we didn't hear what the plans were. It didn't mean we didn't try to apply the plans to our district. We heard them. It doesn't apply to us. And even when we say there's other districts that closed because of contact with COVID, nobody wants to hear that. While we are open, we haven't closed, we haven't shut our district down for the one period of time we did, and we've been open ever since. And as far as the days that are being taken off, like President's Day is gonna be closed, and a child is gonna miss another in-person Monday, those are days that we implemented to have people have a break. It doesn't mean that we're cutting off your education from your children. So we're not able to implement those days in. It doesn't mean that we're favoring one or four of the other. I just think that everybody needs to understand that we are parents sitting up here as well, we are feeling frustration as well. But if you understand and you look back at things that's been done, and if you do compare us to another district like Aldridge, you'll say, "Hey, they are doing something." So, thank you for your time, President Kev, Superintendent. I thank you all for your help and your support for our children in the district.
Thank you, Mrs. Baumdier. Well said.
Sorry, can I say something?
Okay.
Sorry, just to echo what Ms. Torrance said. I also am a parent with three kids in the district and three different schools. I would love for them to be, they're currently hybrid. I would love them to be in school more days than they currently are. They are in school work day, so they haven't even seen the three days yet in. So I feel the frustration. I'm going through a lot of the similar things that I see in the various emails proposed. I feel, I'm going through it. I see what my kids are going through. So it's a very difficult position to be in, because as, I can't just think as a parent what I want for my own children. I have to think about what the other parents in the community want as well. And unfortunately, we do have a very split community in terms of, some people want their kids in five days, some people want their kids all virtual, and there are still parents out there who prefer their kids to be in hybrid, the smaller classes. So I think we just have to really think about everyone. So, the students, the staff, the overall community. We're looking at all the safety precautions, making sure we're putting everything into place. And we do get information that says there's something else we should look at to make things safer. We owe it to the children, we owe it to everyone in the school community to do that.
Yes, I just have a couple of words as well. I've said before, in meetings, I have two kids in the high school, so I, and they are also co-learning. So I understand, the continuum of flux gets very frustrating. What appears to be somewhat inequitable is frustrating. But at the same time, I know that I'm watching what this board has been doing for a year now, and that is to make sure that we have as much equity for every student as possible. And when I watch this board work, there is not a district that I haven't watched. I've watched so many other school board meetings to learn what they're doing, and in regards to what this district has done, to look at other plans, talk to other people. I don't know how public it's known, but Dr. Micah was one of, what, five superintendents to start, restart ed collaboration that went nationwide. So he didn't limit himself to just looking at the district across the street, but everywhere. This is a frustrating time, and there is not a person here who doesn't take the idea of representing everybody in this, in our communities. everybody in this, in our communities. And everybody in this community has a different need. Um, some parents, as, as Mrs. Holy said, they don't want to let their kid in all the time. That's fine. Um, that's their freedom to choose, I suppose, and they can go all virtual. But we have to make sure that there's equity there, that those kids don't lose out on their education because of that. We have to make sure that, um, you know, each parent is respected. And there are a lot of voices in our towns. So we, we do represent and hear everybody, um, not just at this public meeting. We, obviously, uh, some of us are on social media. Some of us have, uh, kids in soccer or other sports. We're, we are hear what people are saying. So we're in this community. This is part of our every single day. It's part of our children's every single day. And for those of us who have kids in districts and sit on this board, some of what happens at this meeting trickles down to them, which is totally unfair. But nevertheless, we hear, we hear what their friends say. So we are very much so very cognizant of what's going on in this community and how we feel about it and make sure that each kid is treated with the respect that they deserve. And it has nothing to do with how many taxes they pay. Children are precious. Their futures are, are precious and they can't be squandered. We are doing everything in this district to make sure that they're not. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody who's contributing. Can I have a motion in a second to adjourn?
I'll motion. One second.
Everyone, aye?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Stay well. Stay safe.